Okay, I see TC joining, there he is. All right, that gives us our quorum of four. So let's go ahead and get started. So I'll call this June 17th, the Management Planning Commission meeting to order. Let us start out with roll call. So Mark Baughman, that's me, I'm here. For you, Jane Dupree.
Present.
Carthick Sittarmon is not going to be here this evening. Mike Presko is probably going to join us late. TC Laddie?
Hello.
I believe Josh Amato is not going to join.
This conference will now be recorded.
And Karen Malcolm.
I'm here, thank you.
Thanks Karen. Okay, Jackie, are you going to read the meeting adjournment?
Yes, I'm going to read it one, well, I'll read it a total of three times tonight, but one more time tonight will be the last one. I'm joined tonight by Amber Malmberg. She's going to take over as the Planning Commission Coordinator. So next meeting, July 1st, she is going to take over my role. So tonight, she is doing her training. So if we have any delays or pauses, I apologize. We're both trying to keep up here. The meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, "The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted." To view live, you can view on the city website, on the city YouTube channel, or on Comcast Channel 21, within Samamish only. To view the meeting later, meeting videos are typically available the day after the meeting. They can be seen on the city website, on the city YouTube channel, and on Comcast Channel 21. I'll hand it back to you Chair Baughman, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Anybody have any comments, or additions, or changes to the agenda this evening? Looks like no, so we'll call the agenda for this evening approved by common consent. Next is approval of our minutes from our June 3 meeting. Does anyone have any comments from the meeting minutes from our June 3 meeting? Nope. Okay, we'll call the meeting minutes from our June 3 meeting approved by common consent. Next is public comment for non-agenda items. We have a couple things on the agenda for this evening, but if you have public comment for non-agenda items, now is the time. So let's go ahead and do non-agenda public comment.
Thank you. We already have a couple callers on the line. I'm going to read the statement, just give other people a chance to call in. "Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. For a verbal public comment, up to three minutes of verbal public comment for non-agenda may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in, call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311, and the access code is 699-839-229." Once you've joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. I'm going to go ahead and unmute our caller. Please begin by stating your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408-200 Eighth Avenue Northeast in Samamish, Washington for the past 20 years. At your last meeting, which was on the 3rd of June for non-agenda public comment, I had brought up that for the Development Reg Phase II, the Issues and Solutions Table, where "solutions" was spelled with two L's, that there were a couple cells in the table that you could see at the top of the text, but you can't read it. Staff did send me the actual document at one time. The City Council meeting, which most recently occurred on the 15th, which was this week, Exhibit 1 does appear again. It says "issues and solutions" with just one L, so the misspelling that's corrected, which is not really an issue. But we're still having, in the table itself, there's a blue column that has number, it's column A, and for item number six, which is Reasonably Exceptions, you can't actually read the last column over, you can see a line of text. And then, I think it got fixed for eight, and then on page 87 of that revised packet, 192 pages, on 11 and 12, you can see text, but it's cut off. So as this was really important stuff, you guys used it for guidance, you took a lot of input, and you've done a lot of work. I would like that very small correction for formatting to be fixed, so that City Council members would be able to read Exhibit 1 with the materials. And there might be other cells that don't have text, but those are the ones where you can see partial text, so whoever edits that and rambles exhibit one, if they could please do that, I'd appreciate it. The other thing I noticed is, at the Planning Commission, it's great, we get to do three minutes of public comment at the beginning, and then seven minutes after you guys talk in presentations, so we can try to speak to those. I do notice that staff and our consultants drops off as soon as they're done with their presentation, so it almost seems like they're just speaking to the commission, who probably won't say anything because it's the end of the meeting, and then the consultants or staff are gone. So I don't know if staff actually goes back and listens to that or not, but it would be really good, because we do try to bring up the right things at the right time, and even though we get seven minutes to say a lot of things or ramble on, I think it is very important, so I hope that that information can be used. And then also, I've been advocating pretty extensively on issues, particularly stormwater, since 2015, and I am never sure who emails need to go to. Like, if I have inputs, I send it to the Planning Commissioner, City Council, and the administrative person in charge, that's very clear. But I never know if I should copy the people who are in charge, or the people that are under them, or the people who are their bosses, or if the city manager needs to get copied. I don't want to make it hard for staff to get it, but I never know how it gets forwarded, since maybe Amber is starting, I guess, to take over from Jackie, if that could at least be clarified for Planning Commission. Like, some of the stuff I sent in tonight is stormwater code, but I only see Director David Pyle's face on the screen, so I don't know if I should be sending that to him or stormwater people, and I'm not sure which stormwater folk. So some guidance there would be greatly appreciated, and thank you for the time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mary. I'm going to place you back on hold here, and I'll hand it back to you Chair Baughman. That was our only caller for the evening.
All right, thank you. So let's move on the agenda to our new business item. And our new business item this evening is some code adjustments for, I think what's intended as administrative changes that have been requested to the Stormwater Management
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Lindsay Oswald. I am a project manager within Department of Community Development Services. I will be giving the presentation this evening. Running the presentation for me is Evan Fisher, who's our senior management analyst. And we also have Stephanie Sullivan, Associate Engineer, that specializes in stormwater with our Public Works Department, on the line to address questions, should you have any. So that, as you stated, this is the presentation on Stormwater Code Administrative Updates this evening. Next slide, please. This evening, we'll be giving a staff presentation, and then providing opportunity for the commission to ask questions of staff. And then we ask that the commission moves into holding the public hearings, taking public comment, and then ending the evening with a recommendation to City Council. Next slide, please. So while we're here this evening, mainly this evening, City Council has given direction to staff to make some administrative process changes to certain drainage adjustment applications that are processed through the city. I'd also like to point out that in various sections of code that we'll be going over this evening, while the majority of those changes are new changes, added text, if you will, to the code section, there are four places where we did some Scrivener error corrections, and I wanted to call those out this evening. All four of the Scrivener error corrections is striking the word interim, as it's referencing an interim comprehensive plan, which our comprehensive plan is no longer interim, it hasn't been for a number of years, so this was an opportunity to clean up that term within the code section. So that's within Samamish Municipal Code, Title 2005-010, the proposed statement. That's shown once in that section. And then in 2005-020, the Land Use Decision Type Table, there's a footnote number four, where interim is listed three times, and we have proposed to strike that in that location as well. And lastly, we're here this evening, because our main goal is to solve a problem of ensuring that neighbors and citizens aren't informed when a drainage adjustment is being requested and considered by city staff. Next slide, please. So these changes, as I stated, are to the administrative process. Next slide. And they are not changes to the Surface Water Design Regulation, or the Samamish Addendum. Next slide, please. So for an overview of the drainage review process, it's required by Chapter 1320 of the Samamish Municipal Code, the Surface Water Regulation for Development Proposals. This section ensures that proposed projects comply with the Surface Water Design Manual in addition to the Samamish Addendum, and that drainage plans are reviewed by city staff during the land entitlement process. And what we mean by the land entitlement process typically is from the start of the process, which is the land use application. We'll get into that a little bit more. Next slide, please. So drainage and land entitlement. The more large-scale land entitlement proposals are through preliminary short subdivisions, preliminary subdivisions, and unified zone development plans. Other land use entitlements that could occur, and this is not an exhaustive list, but just by way of example, are reasonable use exemptions, and potentially even through maybe a conditional use permit, shoring permitting, something of that nature. This proposal would be proposing that it either be processed under a Type 2 process or a Type 3 process. Within the Type 2 process of land entitlement projects, there is an opportunity for public noticing and comment periods. The decision of the Type 2 process is made by the director, and there's the opportunity for appeal to the hearing examiner. In the Type 3 process review, again, there is public noticing, comment periods are provided, and there's an associated public hearing, where the public is allowed and invited to provide testimony at that point as well. The decision on those types of applications is made by our hearing examiner, based on a recommendation and a complete record from staff, and then that is appealable to Superior Court through the Land Use Petition Act. Next slide, please. So what is a drainage adjustment? It's a request by the applicant to vary from a core requirement of the Surface Water Design Manual and the Samamish Addendum. If they choose to request a drainage adjustment, the applicant must propose a compensating and comparable alternative system. The alternate system is evaluated on things such as safety, the impact to the environment, what type of maintenance the system would require, in addition to other factors, and it is a discretionary decision made by the director. Next slide, please. So the drainage adjustment process, what this slide is proposing to do is show what the current process looks like from a high level versus what our proposed process would look like. So currently, drainage adjustments come in, and they're a standalone process. It occurs when it's requested by an applicant, and it's processed as a Type 1 decision. A Type 1 decision does not provide an opportunity for public comment, you know, public noticing, and there's no appeal opportunity. Under these proposed changes, we are encouraging that the drainage adjustment process be concurrent with an associated land use application. So it occurs during the project planning and land entitlement process. It's also associated with a Type 2 or Type 3 decision. That way, opportunity is provided for public noticing and comment periods, and there's an appeal opportunity. In certain cases, it could be necessary that a drainage adjustment be considered in a standalone process, and under those circumstances, the applicant would need to submit an application, and it would be processed as a Type 2, meaning, again, it would be a director decision, but it does provide for public noticing and comment period, as opposed to the current process, which does not have those elements. Next slide, please. So another reminder, before we move into the draft code, we're here to try and solve a problem, and that's to ensure that neighbors and citizens aren't informed when a drainage adjustment is being considered. Next slide, please. All right. At this point, Evan is going to pull up the draft code language for us, and I would like to leave this open to your questions. So Karen, would you like us to go page by page through this? Are there certain sections you'd like us to focus on in regards to changes? How would you like to see us go through this?
I'm not sure that we need to go through it page by page, because a lot of that is pretty redundant. So I don't know how much more you have in your presentation, but I would like to see if anyone has specific questions about the text that's been modified. I do have one, but I'll let others, I'll see if anyone else has any questions first about the text.
That works for us, thank you.
I don't have a question specifically right now about the text, but I was just wondering, how do these go changes impact single-family homes, or is that completely exempt?
The way we drafted this code language, single-family homes are not exempt. If it was tied with a single-family resident, so there isn't necessarily a land entitlement process occurring outside of a building permit, if they needed a drainage adjustment and couldn't meet the standard stormwater requirements, then they would apply for that drainage adjustment, and it would go through the Type 2 process as described. Stephanie, am I missing anything?
Thanks, Lindsay. Yeah, I would, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. I would just add that there are thresholds for full and large project drainage review, which the code amendments specifically call out. So it would be a large or full drainage review project, and it depends on how much impervious surface or grading that a project would be doing that would trigger that type of review. A lot of these single-family projects, if there are additions, or they would be under a different, smaller type of review, and wouldn't need to go through that Type 2 process.
So this would improve, so just potentially, if I have a large piece of land, and I have a house, and if I want to build an ADU, for example, and that requires a review again, does that fall under Type 2 of the drainage review? Can that potentially fall in that category?
It could potentially, if the proposed work triggered full or large project review, which is 5,000 square feet of, you know, new and replaced impervious surface, or 10,000 square feet, I think, of grading. It's pretty large.
TC or Karen, do you guys have any questions right now? Go ahead, TC.
I was going to say, when I was reviewing it, it looked like there was a lot of kind of redundant entries, where the same text had been entered in multiple places. I don't know that we need to go through each one of those. I'm pretty sure we can just hit a points.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Stephanie can jump in as well. I believe you're referring to the section in 2005 about the application supplemental requirements. Having to follow that section, I believe it's 040. I may be off by a number there.
No, my comment was, I don't think that we need to go page by page, because there are multiple entries of the same text. If we cover it once, I don't think we need to cover it multiple times. But that's all I was pointing out.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying. All right. Other sections, specifically at this point. And we can pull this up at the end of the presentation as well, to address other questions if they arise.
So the one question, Linda, that I had, and this is from a late-breaking comment someone made, that I didn't have a chance to study it very thoroughly, but actually, where Evan just was, which is 1320-030, there's three paragraphs there, and then the third paragraph, which, like I said, he just has done the screening. The, yeah, right there, under A, there's a 1 and a 2. Now, there's also some underlying red text on the next page, which I think actually is fine, but this 1 and 2 sort of appears like it's not just administrative process-type language. If you read it, it kind of, it doesn't quite fit in and match all the other administrative process stuff that's going on in here. And I wondered if that's correct, if I read it that way, or if it was maybe left over from the original code and accidentally got highlighted, or what happened. Because it's talking about, you know, the 5,000 square feet, and, let's see what else, Requesting Exemption Number 3. It doesn't, I couldn't tell for sure if it's only administrative. This looks different than the other stuff we're changing.
Stephanie, did you want to try and address that, or do you want me to give it a go first?
I can give some insight. So this is related to the Critical Drainage Area Code in 13.20.040, where they talk about certain projects do not qualify for exemptions, an exception to certain core and special requirements, and so that's what this section is emulating.
So it's not new language, or new requirement, or changing requirement of the surface water standards. It's just reiterating the existing standards, and this is pertinent because these proposed process amendments, administrative changes, are specific to, for large project drainage
Okay, I think I understand that. It just stands out as somewhat different than, kind of like one of those pictures where you look at what's different. This definitely stands out as something that doesn't feel administrative the way it's written, although the numbers seem familiar from other parts of the code. So definitely worth highlighting that it's not actually changing any of the requirements, it's just reiterating what's somewhere else in the code, is what I think you've said.
Yes, and Title 13 is specific to the Stormwater Design Manual. Title 20, the chapter 20, if you will. The 2005 is the administrative process of application. So it's tying the two together, combining those together.
Okay.
I just want to, sorry, I just pulled up the municipal code online, and I'm hoping I'm looking at the right place. So under 3, if I look online right now, I don't see the, you know, the following limitations which is. So where can I find A1 and A2 in the S and T, or is there some other place that I need
So it notes, like, 13.20.040 subsection 5 in the current code, where it goes into explaining that projects within critical drainage areas do not qualify for exemptions, Am I on the right track, Lindsay?
I think the question is, is where does the 5,000 square foot threshold number come from? And the other number that is there, which is 3/4 acres of new impervious surface? So I think that is the question, because those would be new thresholds being added, and it would not be something that is specifically related to the process, because that would be a barrier to your eligibility for an adjustment. So perhaps those come from the manual itself, but just wanting to know where that 5,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface, and less than 3/4 acres of new pervious surface will be added. So where did that come from?
So David, you're right, it is in the manual. I thought we had it somewhere in the code as well. But in the King County Surface Water Design Manual, it's Core Apartment Number 3 for Flow Control Facilities, page 1-38, where it explains that an exemption from Core Requirements Number 3, to provide flow control facilities, is required unless a new and maybe criteria for an exemption, which is less than 5,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface will be created, unless the 3/4 acres of new pervious surface will be added.
Right, so to be clear on that one, it's not a new requirement. The requirement is already in the Surface Water Design Manual, as amended by Samamish and adopted, and as referenced in this chapter, 13.20. But instead, what we're doing is we're porting that over and adding it to the code for clarity upfront as to when you are eligible, because what happens, applicants, is sometimes we go through the initial code screening, and then we get into the manual and find out they're not eligible. So it already is codified by reference in Title 13.20, but what we're doing is we're porting it over and bringing it to the surface, so that there's clarity about when you are eligible and when you are not. We're not adding or changing eligibility, because that's already built into the manual that's adopted and referenced. We're just adding it to this section for clarity.
Thanks for the screen, David.
Okay, unless anybody else has anything, I would suggest, maybe, Lindsay, if we could, which I think is the direction you were going in response to TC's question, is kind of take that standard language that's been inserted in most places, and maybe just do a quick pass over what the change is. Karen, if you have anything.
I think the section that was being brought up is 2005-040, which is the application requirement. While we were going through this section, Evan will navigate there in a moment, but I can kind of give an overview. When we were looking at this section, we had discussed, is there a way that we can make a blanket statement at the beginning, instead of having to add it to various subsections? And we attempted that. It actually became more confusing doing it that way. If you could keep going, Evan. We want 2005-040, so two more sections down, I believe. There we go. So application requirement. And the first place that it shows up is under C. So if we're doing the drainage adjustment concurrently with an underlying land use application, which is what we're encouraging, and would like to have happen, but sometimes it's not necessary based on all of the preliminary work, it doesn't come up. You know, it truly is thought that the standards, as they're prescribed, can be met, and this amendment's not necessary. So if it's discovered later that it is necessary, that's why there's that option for the Type 2 standalone, one of the reasons for the Type 2 standalone. We went through and said, okay, what types of things need to come in with this standalone application if we're looking at the drainage amendment? Because we've already done the reasonable use exemption, we've already done something, another type of underlying land use permitting process. One of the things that came up is for-
use permitting process. One of the things that came up is for drainage adjustment, we don't need a specific fewer availability, or water availability, to, for this application to be considered a complete application for staff to be able to review. We're not necessarily reevaluating the lots that were proposed to be created, or that already existed through a standard, or through a standalone review. So that's why, if this is for the standalone Type Two drainage adjustment process pursuant to Chapter thirteen twenty S and C, then that item is not required with the application supplemental. That way, we're not taking in additional information that's not necessary for review, and in, and keeping an additional copy of it, essentially. That's why this language has been gone. And we've very thoughtfully gone through each subsection in here, A through Q, W, something of that nature, and I'll remember the letters. But it is a standard language, and we wanted it to be through S, and we wanted it to be standard for each section. Does that make sense?
No, I think so.
Okay.
It makes sense to me. Okay, does anybody else have a question about the language, the proposed alternate language, adjusted, I should say, language? Mostly Adam. Nope?
All right, if you could go back to the PowerPoint, please, Evan. All right, and the next slide. So we wanted to try and give an example of a project under the current process, and how we, we pop up. And I, I want to start this example by saying, every single, it's a case by case situation, when these drainage adjustments come up, it doesn't seem that any alternative proposal works the same for multiple locations. They're very site specific in nature. Also, we don't see a lot of these types of applications. I believe, in talking with Stephanie, you know, we see a handful, you know, five, maybe six a year. So these aren't super popular. But when they do come up, we feel that it's important that the public has the opportunity to provide comments and input, whilst they're being reviewed, which is why we're proposing the changes. So with that said, an example project would be that a preliminary plat was proposed and given preliminary approval under the standard drainage requirement, drainage system. And then once you've gone through the preliminary plat process, and you've been given preliminary approval, you'll move on to your construction permitting. So during the site development plan review, it was discovered that the applicant wasn't going to be able to meet the standard drainage system, and they discovered this. So they submitted an application, which at this point is a Type One, right? It gets submitted directly to Public Works for review, and requested, but they couldn't meet the required fall distance to treat with the approved standard drainage system, and avoid critical areas. Thereby, they can't utilize the standard system. So their drainage amendment included a request to relocate the stormwater vault and use an alternative treatment system. This would be evaluated against critical areas, safety, the ability to clean and maintain the system, right, as we talked about a little bit earlier this evening. And then the director would make the decision on whether or not to approve this alternative system. Now, had this come under our current process, and been discovered, discovered and proposed during the preliminary plat review window, the public would have had an opportunity to provide comment. Instead, there was no public comment opportunity on a design change that affected this plat that had been given preliminary approval. In the current proposal, this would then give the public comment and public participation. And that's what we're looking for. Are there any questions about that? Does it kind of elevate the situation of how we exist today, and what we're looking for to exist in the future?
Is there any sense that you can give about how this change could affect the timeline of the process?
It does take longer, because a Type Two process has the public comment period, which is fifteen days. So that adds time. And then there's, so you have to let that time come through, and then there's the time for reviewing the comments, and then the potential of having to have the applicant and staff address any comments that came in. So it could add a fairly substantial amount of time, I mean, probably roughly thirty to sixty days to the process, from a Type One. Does that sound fair, David?
Yes, that, that does sound accurate. If, if I could also add in there, that in the case of a subdivision, a formal subdivision, where an applicant typically goes through a preliminary subdivision phase, then a site development, site engineering, infrastructure development phase, and then a final subdivision phase, in the event that an applicant did not disclose as part of the preliminary subdivision phase, prior to public hearing, that they will be needing a drainage adjustment with their project for some circum, to address some circumstance that they, that they need to overcome, that, and they get to the site engineering phase after the preliminary subdivision approval has been granted by the hearing examiner. But if they then come in as part of that site engineering, site development phase, which is a Type One permit, it's a construction permit, if they identify that they need a drainage adjustment later in the process at that point, it would require that they go back to the preliminary subdivision phase, and reopen the preliminary subdivision for a plat amendment, which would then require public noticing, and, and would possibly require that it go back to hearing, depending on the degree of change. So I think that is probably the most impactful on these projects, is that applicants need to do their due diligence upfront, and make sure they know what they're getting into when they are designing their projects. We, we have seen, and this is not the regular scenario that we see, but we have seen projects come in for a preliminary subdivision, where the applicant's engineer attests through a preliminary technical information report, a T I R, that they can meet the city's drainage requirements, and they will be able to. That information is used in the hearing examiner's consideration of the project. And the hearing examiner then goes about approving the project based on that information. Then, when he, when they take the next step, and get to the plat infrastructure phase, the site development phase, site engineering phase, whatever you want to call it, the applicant then, for whatever reason, determines that they can't comply with the city's drainage manual, and they need to do a drainage adjustment due to some site circumstance, or due to gravity, due to soils, due to grading requirements. It really depends on the reason why they might need an adjustment. And they then will come into the city, under the Type One permit process, behind closed doors, the public is not aware of this, and they will ask for a drainage adjustment, that it be granted. And then the, the city staff are left with making a decision about whether or not to approve that drainage adjustment. So what this is trying to address is the fact that if an applicant, as part of the subdivision, is going to indicate on their application, as part of their application materials, that the public is reviewing, and that the hearing examiner is relying upon to make his decision on preliminary subdivision, that if, that if they, if they then change their mind, or change the information after the fact, that, that it would then push the project back to the preliminary subdivision phase, so that it can be reviewed at that level, prior to it going back to construction permit again. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that, for anybody that's listening, that that, that really is the biggest impact here. There are impacts on other projects, smaller projects, where it might be pushed into a Type Two process, which requires, you know, notice of application, comment period, official decision being issued, an appeal, as Lindsay described. And that, that also is a burden. But there are different scenarios with, with different implications here. I just want to make sure we're all aware of that.
Yeah, thank you, David. And that's the change that we made in nineteen eight, in the redline version of the code this evening, is talking about it having to go back through and do a preliminary plat amendment. If it's tied with a preliminary plat, and then it gets changed, as David described. Under the standards today, a drainage adjustment request by itself does not necessarily trigger that preliminary plat amendment process being reopened. So if it affected other things that triggered it, then it would have. But in most circumstances, it doesn't, under the current regulations as they exist today. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission move to recommend the city council to propose amendments in Chapter thirteen twenty of the S and C Surface Water Runoff Regulations, Chapter nineteen A twelve S and C subdivisions and short subdivisions, Chapter twenty oh five S and C procedures for land use permit applications, public notice hearings and appeals, and Chapter twenty one B eighty-five S and C development standards, interim stormwater standards, as presented by staff and as described in Exhibit One of the agenda, and agenda bill this evening. Next slide. Are there any further questions for staff at this point?
So just a reminder for everybody what this will look like. If we have any more questions for Lindsay, or Stephanie, or David, now's the time. And then we'll have a motion in a second, and then we'll have a discussion if there is any. And, I'm sorry, I have to do the, the public hearing in the middle there. I apologize. I got ahead of myself. We'll do the public hearing in the middle there, then we'll have a discussion. And then we'll make a recommendation to the city council. So if you have questions for staff, now's the time to finish those off.
With T V, I think, just, just to try and be clear, a lot of the village is oriented at kicking requests for runoff changes back into a period where there will be notice, and comment, and hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a correct statement.
And, and one of the fundamental goals is to avoid or abate the ability of either an individual or a builder to take an approved plan, and perpetually modify it to get what they want, without going through the full hearing process with their end goal actually in mind. Is that correct?
Yes, we're looking for them to be upfront in the beginning with what is actually necessary to complete the project. And of course, you know, there are certain circumstances where you just don't know that at the beginning, and sometimes you're caught off guard. But yes, the, the goal of this is that that all be disclosed at the beginning and reviewed openly.
And do we have any historical information on how many changes this would or could have prevented?
I don't know if we have that historical data. There might be some anecdotal information Stephanie could provide. I would fall back on, again, this isn't something that, it's a huge request, or a large volume request, if you will. On average, we'd see a handful of these types of requests each year, so five to six.
If I could, if I could add on to that, it's not so much that we're, we're trying to prevent them from being approved. It's, it's more that we're trying to approve them out in, out in the open with transparency. We as staff don't like being propositioned by applicants behind closed doors, where nobody knows what's going on, and then an adjustment gets approved, and nobody knew about it, and then the project looks a little different than what was approved by the hearing examiner for a subdivision. And people ask why, and we, we would prefer that, that our work be done out in the open, and that be accessible to the public, should anybody be interested in wanting to know about the drainage facility that's going into a project. They can look at the record, they, there's a notification that goes out. And should they disagree with it, that decision, then they could file an appeal. It's a locally accessible appeal, instead of a, a Lupa Superior Court appeal. This, this code amendment provides accessibility to the public for a local hearing examiner appeal. Whereas currently, if someone wanted to file an appeal on a construction permit, they would be required to go to Superior Court, which is a much more daunting endeavor for the average citizen.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Looks like no. Okay. Thanks, Lindsay. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
So next, we'll do the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing, and Jackie, I presume you read the statement again, but let's go ahead and do the public hearing for any public comments on this topic.
Thank you, Chair Baughman. Hold on just one second. All right, I'll go ahead and read our statement. It looks like we do have one caller on for our public hearing. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation twenty dash twenty five, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment can be submitted. Up to seven minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the public hearing. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is one eight seven two two four zero three three one one, and the access code is six nine nine eight three nine two two nine. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you, and it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say unmuted when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. Looks like we have our first caller. I'll go ahead and unmute you. Please begin whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name's Mary Whitaker. I live at four zero eight two hundred eighth Avenue Northeast in Samantha, Washington for twenty years. Been working on stormwater code amendments since two thousand fifteen. I basically agree with the intent of what's supposed to be done, and had been talked about by stormwater people, and also got Director Pyle for Development Regulation Phase Two. We do want to have that permits know what they're going to do, to try to do it, and then if an adjustment comes later, that there would be a Type Two process, so there would be noticing, a public comment period, and a top opportunity for a public hearing locally. This does need to occur, not just for full and large drainage review, which are really pretty large. It needs to occur for anything that's a drainage adjustment. So the other types of drainage review are simplified, directed, or targeted. And those would include a single-family home, or even small changes to a single-family home, because some of those homes are in critical drainage areas, and people shouldn't just be able to build, or start without a permit, and then add a permit, and then decide to do drainage later, and then try to change it. And the reason that this is so important for single-family home projects, which might be on a lot, or lots, or a parcel, and for short plats, which are two to nine lots, and for major subdivisions, which are ten lots or more, is water flows downhill, and gravity impacts the soils, the trees, the people, the subject systems, the animals, and the amount of water that's in groundwater for the people below. So the way it's coded currently, it's close, but it keeps saying large or full drainage review. And there's a couple of problems with that. For example, there's a reasonable use exception clause, and it's only going to make it a Type Two if it's a large or full drainage review. And I don't think there's many reasonable use exceptions that come in for short plats or major subdivisions. Those are usually for individual, single-family homes. And then, so most of the changes are, like on page eleven and twelve, which had been pointed out before, it does look like it's more than administrative, but it's not. What it's doing is, page fifty of the one thousand one hundred fifteen page King County Surface Water Design Manual, it does talk about the five thousand square foot threshold, and the three quarters acre of pervious surfaces. That is just being repeated. It's usually not good to repeat something that's adopted somewhere else. If you have to, you can, but there might be a way to get around it. So you should look at that. And page twelve just sort of lists information that's okay. But we do want to have it applied to single-family home projects, or something that would require a permit on a single-family home. So, for example, on page fourteen, there should be drainage adjustments, I believe, for single-family homes, and for reasonable use exceptions. single-family homes and for reasonable use exceptions. And then if you are going to do a drainage adjustment to that, it really should be a type-two situation so that it gets announced and there is comment, because it can impact people and their property and the environment. Page 15 also seems to indicate that it's only full and large, and that's only subdivisions and short subdivisions, because everything in Chapter 19A-12 is only for subdivisions and short subdivisions, it's not specifically for individual, single-family homes or portions permits on those projects. So the general input is, the city really needs to be clear about what changes or thresholds an owner will need to have a permit for, and I believe David Pyle, as director with Consultant Framework, is working on that. Like if you're doing a re-roof, you don't need a permit, but if you're doing a small remodel or even a deck rebuild, or if you have any net increase in impervious surface, you may need to have a drainage review, particularly if it's in a critical drainage area. And if a permit requires a drainage review, the city staff is going to review that, and then if you're going to change it later, that's really when you want the type-two to happen, because they didn't do the planning upfront. And I suppose people could just go and say, every project needs to have a drainage adjustment, and if they don't need one, fine, and try to get around it. So you should look at that case, too. But the intent of what needs to happen is happening, but the way it's coded, it really looks like it's only going to happen for short plots and long plots, which are small subdivisions and large subdivisions. It really does need to happen for individual, single-family homes. So I hope you'll relook at it. I know it's hard to read the code, there's a lot of code, there's 1,000 pages or more from the King County, and then there's 38 pages of our own addendum, but I would be willing to work with anybody or staff or people to see if the changes that I'm suggesting are concerned about, if those can be done before it would move on. The intent is good, but I think that changes need to get made so it can work for single-family homes as well. The other thing is, is where the redundant codes are that TC Labby had pointed out, if you have already done your water or sewer certificate, you don't need to do it again. But if you're going to do something with your drainage that's going to affect, like a tree retention area and put more water, remove water from there, or if there's a septic field either on the property or in any of the areas around, if you have a cut bank because you're cutting for a drainage facility, or if you're putting drainage water down, there's actually a part in the code under 13200405AI, line 6, that says you can't put drainage water within 100 feet of somebody's septic area. That took a long time to get in the city code, it's been a thing for hundreds of years, and we just need to keep that in. So I think, if you look at the email I sent in right at 5:00, it covers most of these. If this is too hard to listen to, I am willing to work to make sure that these changes get done, because the intention is very good. I understand there aren't a lot of people that use it, but if you have drainage that gets approved and/or adjusted above you, and you're a down gradient person, you really have no recourse to do anything, you're just told you shouldn't live at the bottom of the hill, and that's not a fair statement, because the reason we have drainage review and stormwater code, as Tony Delso, who's a former senior stormwater manager for the city, she says, "We want people to manage their stormwater," and I believe City Council agrees with that. So thank you for listening to me, and I hope you will give consideration to what I spoke and wrote into that.
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to place you back on mute. That was our only caller for our public hearing, so I'll hand it back to you, Chair Baughman.
Thanks, Jackie. Can I, Lindsay, can I ask you, let's just go back for one second, so is it correct to say that if someone decides to build a house on a piece of property, and then the result of all of that is 4,999 square feet of disturbance, I know there's nuance to that, but then they are completely exempted from this? They have to have a normal process, but they're not considered large or, what's the language? Full review or large? Is that a correct statement, that it's really only that, above 5,000? And then I guess, as an adjunct to that question, is that sort of a parallel to what the King County rules say, and that's why the code says the same thing?
So I know that's not parallel, got some feedback, but I know that's a parallel to the King County Stormwater Manual and with this San Antonio addendum. As far as how that would be handled, I'd have to turn that over more to the expert, to Stephanie Foden, who does the review of the stormwater and her team. But overall, yes, if it's under the threshold there, then it wouldn't be a large or full-scale project.
So I guess I'll add, so the development review team here is a direct team that reviews the plans, and in the stormwater group, I helped with the drainage adjustment process. So it's been a little while since I've actually done development review, but basically, the simplified drainage review threshold is a single-family project that will result in less than 2,000 square feet, or no, 2,000 square feet or more of new impervious, replaced impervious, or new plus replaced impervious, or 7,000 square feet or more of land disturbing activity. So 2,000 square feet is the trigger for simplified drainage review. Getting the full drainage review, it's more like 5,000 square feet of new and replaced impervious surface and 10,000 square feet of land disturbing activity.
So maybe my question is more that, without getting too far into the weeds of this, it seems that to change when these processes would be applied would then create discontinuity between King County stormwater standard and what we require. That's kind of my sense of the reference to the King County stormwater manual here, and if we were to change that, then we would be implementing a process that's not the same as what King County's rules say. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, is there a different threshold that this should apply to? Are we just following a threshold that's been created outside of this particular code, and is that, you know, the reason why it's there? Kind of a, should the threshold be lower question? And you could always argue that, but of course, if you create secondary problems by creating discontinuity between our code and other rules, then that's not a good idea, either.
I'm not sure, do you want to pick that, Lindsay? I think some of that threshold decision came from council earlier on. They wanted to, is that not right, David?
I can jump in. Yeah, so there was a conversation with council about what is the right-size threshold, and there was conversation about, should individual, single-family homes be pulled into this? Should it be limited to larger projects where there is more risk for impact? And the direction that we had was to take it up with larger projects that had more risk for impact. That doesn't mean that the Planning Commission couldn't add as part of their recommendation that the council, that when the council picks it up, that the Planning Commission recommends, you know, these changes, but also recommends that it be adjusted to include simplified drainage review, and that would be something you could recommend. It just depends what your intent is here. If your intent is to pull in individual, single-family lots, that is likely going to hold up individuals who are trying to build a home and add more process to their building permit application. In some instances, there's value in that, in others, there isn't. I mean, you might say that you could add simple, you could add, make it a type-two process for a drainage adjustment for simplified drainage review for those projects that are in a critical drainage area, and I think that would address much of what Mary's comments were getting at. And what it would do is it would limit application of a type-two process for a drainage adjustment under simplified drainage review to only those projects that are located in a critical drainage area, which is, which does have a higher potential for impact than does a standard new, single-family home, for example, outside of the critical drainage area. I don't know what you think about that, Stephanie?
Yeah, I think that was pretty well put and helped clarify. So I think, to sum it up, staff presented changes based off of staff's understanding of the direction from council. The Planning Commission believes that it needs to include additional or be more restrictive or broader, then that can be part of your motion.
All right, I'm going to suggest that we go ahead and move on. We'll need to make a motion in a second, which the motion, the recommended motion was included in the packet, which I don't have right at my fingertips at the moment, but if someone could make that motion and second it, then we can have discussion about what we want to do.
I can make the motion. You ready?
Go ahead.
All right. Need to recommend the City Council to propose amendments to Chapter 13.20 of the SMC Surface Water Runoff Regulations, Chapter 19A-12 of the SMC Subdivisions and Short Subdivisions, Chapter 20.05 of the SMC Procedures for Land Use Permit Applications, Public Notice, Hearings and Appeals, and Chapter 21B-85 of the SMC Development Standards, interim stormwater standards as presented by the staff and described in Exhibit 1.
Can someone second it, maybe?
I'll second. Mike Roscoe.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, it's been seconded to recommend the City Council to make the stormwater code adjustments as recommended. Any discussion? Now's the time, if you want to discuss any potential changes or anything like that.
Well, I know we discussed this, and if you are, a question came up about, you know, PCS, do we have any sort of either anecdotal or other historical evidence to see how many of these changes or reviews that we have to do? So along the same lines, for a single-family home in critical areas, have we had, you know, applications, have we had either homeowners not follow through or had problems because the correct drainage requirements were not met? And Tamara can explain some example of that.
So I'll ask Stephanie to help us out here a little bit. We traditionally have more complexity in stormwater review in projects that are located in the critical drainage area, Tamara, Inglewood. We do have some additional requirements for projects in those areas, and I do know that there is more risk with projects in those areas because of the physical attributes, slopes, the soils, and the fact that not all of the neighborhoods are built out with public stormwater infrastructure. And because of that, it can be more complex for a builder to design a stormwater system that will serve their property. It's not as simple as connecting to the city's public system. In some cases, they have to tightline, you know, for several hundred linear feet, get access easements from neighboring properties, find a discharge location. There are other implications as well, and it is possible that, from my perspective, and this is anecdotal, and I don't work on a daily basis in these categories, but my observation is that it's more probable that you might receive a request for a drainage adjustment in those areas because it is more complex to design and deliver stormwater systems. I don't know what, if Stephanie can provide the more factual response from what I just said.
I will say that is very accurate, the way David put it. We at the city do have more restrictive requirements for certain critical drainage areas, so for instance, Beaver Lake and Pine Lake have more stringent water quality standards and buttress treatment requirements, where, you know, people are, you know, trying to build a new, single-family home, although there are not very many lots left, or doing an addition or remodel to an existing, single-family home, and are required to add water quality treatment on these rather small, constrained sites that have shoreline requirements and other trees they need to retain, and so in the design process, it can be very difficult to meet the manual and our requirements to the letter. And so an adjustment process actually gives them an opportunity to vary from that written standard and explain how they're providing a compensating and comparable result, and meeting the criteria for granting adjustment, which is environment, appearance, function, making ability, and good, sound engineering judgment. If they can't, I just wanted to add, if they can't, if we deny adjustment, and we have denied adjustment, they can ask the reconsideration. If the director denies the reconsideration, there is no appeal opportunity, like Lindsay was explaining, because it's type-one in the current process, but they could do an adjustment criterion exception, which actually does go to a public process, although I have never personally been involved in one of those.
I think maybe part of the question, which I maybe answered out there again, is how often does someone have to request something different later in the process, which is kind of what this revised code is intended to address, is when something comes up later, either as a surprise or not as a surprise, and they want to make an adjustment later. I guess the question is, if there are issues on critical areas for single-family homes that occur, but people generally are doing a pretty good job now with the rules, that they are getting it as part of the initial review, then this wouldn't really affect things very much. But if there are changes that are common in those areas for single-family homes that occur later in the process, then applying these changes to those single-family home review situations would make a difference. I guess I'm curious, and you described it, how often that would really make a difference, not with how often that somebody find a problem later?
So this, the building permit process doesn't have a public noticing, period, right, David? So this change would actually require that if they need a drainage adjustment to complete their building permit process, they would have to go through the type-two process with a public noticing. And the timeline for drainage adjustment right now, it can be, you know, about six weeks, and so during the type-two process would add, I think, like the 30 to 50 days on top of that.
So, yeah, that, thank you, Stephanie, that's accurate. And the, I think the question is whether or not the public wants or feels needed, it's necessary to have notification of a drainage adjustment proposed for an individual, single-family home. Currently, that's not required, as Stephanie said, and if you were to amend what is currently under review here to add simplified, to add a type-two process for drainage adjustments for simplified drainage review in the critical drainage area, it would then pull in those projects that are located in a critical drainage area, that are under a threshold of a full or large project, but that are in simplified threshold, and would then require that there be public notification. It also would allow for an appeal, period, to the hearing examiner, and that could be an appeal by the applicant or by a concerned member of the community. So as Stephanie said, there is not currently an appeal mechanism, but that would provide an appeal mechanism for the applicant if the city denied it. So that, there's value there as well, because it provides opportunity for local appeal by an applicant in the event that the city denied their drainage adjustment request for new, new, single-family home under simplified drainage review in the critical drainage area. I'm throwing out a lot of terms, and I apologize for that, it's a technical issue. I hope you're tracking what I'm saying.
Thanks, David. Thanks, David. Um, more discussion or questions or comments?
My, my last series of questions is more oriented to the understanding, I think, how many or how much can be impacted by this? So I'll, I'll go through the questions, I can, I guess, kind of in series. If we look at the total number of permits issued, what is then the total number of closed door modifications requested? And of those requests, how many were multiple requests, so revisions to a previous?
We'd have to defer to Stephanie's judgment on that. Um, in your, in, in your experience, Stephanie, um, about how many drainage adjustment requests just across the board do we receive per year?
Five or six.
And what, what percentage of the total permits does that represent? If there are only ten or twelve permits issued, then it's very high.
So there, there typically are far more than ten or twelve permits issued. Um, I, I don't have the statistic in front of me, and I don't want to just make up a number, so, but, but I do know that it is, uh, significantly more when we take into account, uh, new single family homes on existing vacant lots, subdivisions, short subdivisions, and home additions. Um, there are, you know, in, in the high hundreds of permits being issued every year. Um, so, um, I, you know, with that number in mind, I, I guess it'd be probably more valuable to understand, um, how many of those drainage adjustments that we get per year are related to an individual single family home on an existing vacant lot versus how many are related to a larger project like a, a subdivision or, um, short subdivision? And I don't know if you have any sense of that, Stephanie? I mean, we, we don't have these statistics readily available. We're just sorta taking into account our experience. So if there's a number thrown out, please don't know that that, that might be up or down just a little bit. This is just a generalization.
Yeah, I think I'm, from my own justification, I'm just trying to get an understanding of, are we, are we trying to prevent kind of the exception or something that is the rule where either individual or larger developers come in and say, well, we're just gonna put something on the books, and then we can just change it infinitely to meet whatever our needs are? And we know that what we're putting out there initially during the review period meets all of the criteria, but then we'll just ask for an infinite number of revisions until we, we get to what we actually want. Which is kind of a common theme, David, that we've talked about over a lot of these, you know, different meetings, is, you know, let's, let's not let it leave that by a thousand cuts.
I would say that, um, it's, it's really, we're, most applicants really try their best and do a good job of meeting the manual. Um, that's their goal, and that's why they hire an engineer. Most engineers are really trying to, to meet the manual. There are some engineers out there that maybe don't understand our manual, maybe don't understand our landscape and what we're dealing with, and get frustrated with our manual, and instead of trying to meet it as, as we see, they simply want an end run shortcut, and they want an adjustment, because that's what they're comfortable with. They're comfortable building, you know, the, the, I, I remember when I used to work for an engineering firm, there was a, a statement of, you know, um, concrete engineers are good at building concrete. They're not good at building stick structures, right? So it's, you know, it's within their comfort zone. So sometimes a, an engineer is comfortable building a certain type of structure, technology, whatever you wanna call it, and they're not comfortable with what our manual prescribes. So they might tend to want to ask for an adjustment towards what they're comfortable with. Um, I, I'm trying to give, you know, do them a, a favor of saying, hey, n- not everybody understands what the manual's after. Um, and I think Stephanie's had to deal with that in her time in development review, and she probably explained that, 'cause she's lived through that. Um, but we have, we have, we have some applicants that do a great job, we have some that do an okay job, and we have some where really all they want is to come in, ask for an adjustment, and, and build what they wanna build. There are, so it is, I, I guess, to answer your question, it is really the exception that we're trying to prevent. And most importantly, when we get to that point where something is proposed, for whatever reason it's proposed, we just wanna be transparent about it. We want it to be done out in, out in the open, as opposed to us feeling like we're, we're processing something behind closed doors that the public doesn't know about.
Okay. Thank you, David and Stephanie.
Are there questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, so I, I understand where TC's been coming from in terms of the sort of easing that process as it went around. I think there's a couple of other things here that I, I wonder about, and trying to, to channel Mary with her a little bit. Um, you know, I think her concern, and one that I would have, would be the implications to those who are, who, you know, down slope, um, you know, from the changes that are being made, or in the case of, you know, like, um, Pine Lake or Beaver Lake, that, you know, could affect the, the water quality. And so I, I need to understand a little bit better, and I'm thinking primarily for the single family home projects, which Mary brought up. Um, the care, I guess, um, the ability to protect the environment in those downstream, that the review would be done as type one versus type two that's more public. That is certainly getting public, I'm sure we'll get, you know, some of the folks that may have concerns downstream, but in terms of the solutions, what would be approved? Help me understand a little bit about the differences there. In other words, the question is, how important is it, not just for transparency, but for a good result, a good solution, to, to go with more the type two versus type one?
Doesn't change the technical requirements of the manual.
So the real issue is how public that process should be for the single family homes, yeah?
I would say that, that the value is in, in the public, with the public process, we, we have public comment, and there are things, you know, we, we, we do take public comment seriously for projects, and there are things that we learn. Part of public comment is probing the environment, it's probing the neighbors, you know, hey, this is the, the plan. We as a city don't know everything about your neighborhood. There are things out there that we're unaware of, and we do learn things through public comment, which we value, and then that's feedback that we give to the applicant, the engineer. It's possible that with a drainage adjustment proposal that comes in, we get comment back that then results in another, another refinement to that design, and, and, and ends up being a better product versus us reviewing it behind closed doors where we're not benefiting from that feedback, um, and us approving something. Now, we try our best, we do site visits, we, we have, um, mapping resources, we have, you know, some knowledge of different neighborhoods, um, and, and we do our best with that, but, you know, adding an additional layer of public comment, um, as, as much additional work as it adds, does, does sometimes result in a better outcome.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. That, that's very clear. So then, um, so that would be a benefit, a benefit to the environment in those sort of, you know, downhill. Um, and so for the homeowner who would then be faced with, you know, additional timeline, um, the benefit would be the potential for an appeal, if I understand correctly. Is that, is that right?
Yes, if their, um, if their application was denied, then they would have the ability to appeal under a type two.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not just how negative it is from the, the homeowner's standpoint in terms of any, you know, timeline delay in the project, and again, thinking about the single family.
I was just gonna say, the only, um, appeal ability for the type one building permit would be LUPA, right?
Superior Court Appeal, which is something that's not really attainable to the average neighbor.
Okay, that's, that's all helpful. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? It seems like the discussion here is mostly centered around whether we want to extend this, um, to single family developments that are under the large threshold in critical areas. And I guess I, I'm not sure that I have a strong opinion about that, so I would leave it to the rest of the commissioners if they feel like it needs to be amended to incorporate that. This was the direction from the council, and I think it's obviously a step in the right direction. It would be potentially good to extend it further, but, um, I don't know how much we could stick to the timeline if we do that, so it's thing to consider, at least. I'll ask one more time for any comments or questions, and then we'll move on. Take the vote.
Yeah, I think I might, uh, suggest that we consider an amendment, um, to extend this to single family homes in those critical areas, and be clear to that, what the other commissioners think about that.
I think if this is for single family homes that are, you're being built or go, undergoing major modification or restoration, we should definitely look at including it, but not trying to apply standards to somebody that's not doing anything. Right? Must be, I guess, a grandfather clause, right? It's a, it's a point in time when moving forward, right?
Yeah, I think if I understand that it would be, if someone, um, does really anything and is one of these critical areas, that, um, if they're, if they're exceeding a certain threshold, but not achieving, achieving's not the right word, by getting up to the large project, so there's sort of a, you know, range in between there, which sounded like, I think it was twenty-five hundred square feet. So there's a, there's a middle ground in there where you're, um, above twenty-five hundred, but you're not up to the large threshold yet. And so if you're in a, a lot of times, it would be pretty easy to build a single family house, I think. And two-story house, yeah, sure, you could absolutely be under the twenty-five hundred or, or right in that range of twenty-five hundred of footprint, um, so you wouldn't meet the large, but you're still a pretty significant project versus someone is adding on a, a small addition, five hundred square feet, they wouldn't meet either of those. That is one risk here of, of, um, making changes to this, is, you know, it probably does require some more study to understand the particulars. Um, I don't know, David has any comment about that, but it does seem like, it sounds like an appropriate thing to do. I'm not sure if we have enough knowledge to do that. I, 'cause there's some particular numbers and specifics that probably need to be thought about.
So my, you know, my, my suggestion would be that if you're wanting to add, uh, that additional layer for those, for, for single family projects that are subject to simplified drainage review and are located in the critical drainage area, that for a drainage adjustment for those projects, it would require processing as a type two, uh, application. So what that would do is it would take any single family residential project that is per the, the, per title thirteen, subject to simplified drainage review, um, what was the other one? There was large project drainage review, and then what was the other one, Stephanie? I have to toggle back to the other screen, hold on. Full, yeah. So there would be, it'd be simplified, full, or large project drainage review for single family homes, and, and really, you were really just looking at the simplified, um, that are located in a critical drainage area, which is a mapped area in the city, includes large portions of Inglewood and Tamara, um, and other parts of the city, um, that a drainage adjustment for those projects would also be required to be processed as a type two application. And I, I don't see that as a large number of projects per year. So I don't know, Stephanie, what, what your thoughts are on that.
I just, I need to add that the thresholds for drainage review for projects in critical drainage areas are much smaller. So instead of two thousand square feet for simplified drainage review, you're looking at two hundred feet, square feet. Um, so while, you know, because those projects require drainage review at two hundred square feet of, I'm looking at, um, SMC thirteen dot twenty dot zero two zero subsection one F, so when located within a critical drainage area, draining to a landside hazard area, or, um, G, where it's Camara or Inglewood, and it has those lower thresholds, um, those trigger drainage review, they trigger, um, flow control and water quality requirements, um, and that's where you can get into those drainage adjustment requests for potentially more projects. But again, we, we still only see five or six a year, so.
Okay. Does that cause anyone to wanna go ahead and, and try to make an amendment, or should we?
I have a quick question on, on what Stephanie just said. So for those, those situations, which you mentioned, you know, in, uh, for Tamara or Inglewood, in, in section D, what would be the administrative process for that? Because I think that's what we're trying to address here in this one, right? So would the public have, uh, a chance to, you know, to do public comment, and, and would these decisions exist with, um, uh, you know, the being, uh, if there was an appeal, what would the process be for these, these particular circumstances?
So as it stands now, if, you know, someone came in with a building permit in Heimlich or Beaver Lake, um, they were set, they would be subject to drainage review at five hundred square feet or more, a net increase of five hundred square feet or more than previous surface. Um, under the current process, if they needed to request a drainage adjustment, it would just be that type one process decision by the director. If you added to this code amendment, the type two would require the public noticing, um, process, and to be opportunity for, to appeal.
So right now, uh, for, um, anything under thirteen dot twenty dot twenty, uh, if there's an appeal, then it would just, it's, first of all, if you do this the type one adjustment, and then if there's an appeal, it would just go to the director, um, and not to the, to the, and this is what we're trying to avoid from a type two, a type two, is that correct?
Were you talking about the current process, or what the proposed?
No, the current process. So current process. So current process for, um, type one. So if, 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 for example, there was a drainage for a single family home, which is in Tamara or Inglewood right now, and, uh, if it's, you know, uh, if it's, um, two hundred square feet, what would be the appeal process? So what he explained was that it would be, first of all, it would be the type one drainage review, and if there were adjustments made, it could, uh, the final decision would be made, be made by the director, right? And, and if we wanted to make an amendment to our, uh, motion right now, then we can potentially say, instead of this being a type one, let's make it type two, so that it could go through the public, you know, noticing process, and then also, and the other sort of administrative process that we're trying to change.
Yes. And just to be technical, uh, projects that require drainage review in Camara and Inglewood go through targeted drainage review because they have that landside hazard drainage area designation. So they're one step up from simplified.
Okay. So Stephanie?
Sorry, just for clarification, if I may. So Stephanie, sorry, just for clarification, if I may, there's lots of nuances for every situation again, so it makes it really difficult to try and pinpoint this down.
You could, you could broaden the proposed amendment to simply include any drainage adjustment request that is located in the critical drainage area. And that would, that would capture simplified, targeted, large project, and what's the other one? I always get these confused.
Full.
Full, yes. So, so what that would do is it would capture all categories except for, what's the lowest of all of those, Stephanie? There's one that.
Simplified.
Okay, so it would capture all, all categories of drainage review in the critical drainage area when a, when an adjustment is proposed for a project that's subject to drainage review in the critical drainage area. Residential projects located in, all residential projects located in critical drainage areas, subject to drainage review, where a adjustment is proposed, shall be subject to a type-two process.
So I'm thinking that, actually, I need to get, we familiarize with the Roberts Rule. So would we make that as a motion to amend?
Yeah, you just make an amendment for amendment in a second, and we see if there's any discussion, and then vote on the amendment, and then move on to the legal.
Okay, I thought so. Just it's always good to be sure. Yeah, and so I would, I would make a motion to amend the, whatever we said as a part of the motion, to whatever David said. I tried writing that down, but there was a lot of language in there. But it includes the single-family home projects, right, on parcels of blocks. Any drainage adjustment request shall be processed as a type-two. And I think I got a lot of those. I'm not sure if I got all of the, all of the elements. David, perhaps you could help?
Sure, yeah. So it would be any single-family residential project that requires drainage review that is located in a critical drainage area and is requesting an adjustment from the requirements of the city's stormwater manual, shall be subject to a type-two process.
Okay. So am I, should I try to repeat all of that, or can you think that is?
Yeah, if we can, we'll stumble through it here. So I want to just clarify my cue of moves to amend the main motion by adding, as David described, those residential projects in critical drainage areas that are subject to drainage review when they wanted to appeal. So is there a second to that?
I think.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend. Any discussion one way or the other about that amendment? I mean, I think that the only thing that concerns me a little bit is, you know, you do want to be a little bit careful to consider how that change, while it sounds very appropriate for projects that we might all envision are significant. If the limits are quite small, and 200 square feet is really pretty small, you know, who is that really affecting? And really, do we need to have a four- to six-week public process for someone that's adding a 200-square-foot patio that is subject to drainage review? And I, you know, I'm just cautious about unanticipated consequences of those things. And I think we should at least acknowledge that there is potential for that. Okay, any other comments about the amendment?
Yeah, Mark, I hear that. That's a concern I have, and I'm trying to weigh that versus, well, it's not just 200 square feet, but it's a, you know, 750-square-foot change, and it affects, you know, people that are downhill in a pretty substantial way. So those are the trade-offs that we're trying to weigh.
And I'm sure that there will be discussion when this gets in front of the council as well, right? Okay, if there's no other comments, then I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment as stated, which is to add in the residential projects subject to drainage review in critical areas, using the simplified language there. So all those in favor of the amendment to add that into the main motion, if you both raise your hand and say aye at the same time, so we get a real clear picture, even though there's only five of us, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those no. Okay, thank you. So the amendment passes and is added. Any more discussion on the main motion? Now that we've kind of covered that topic. Okay, so let's go back and vote on the main motion as amended, which is to recommend these provisions to the city council as presented by staff in Exhibit 1, and as amended with the addition of the smaller residential projects. So those in favor of recommending that to the city council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those no. Okay, that passes. Thank you, everyone. That takes care of that topic. Let's move on to our next topic in the agenda, which is a discussion about planned unit development with Jeff Arango. And so Jeff, go ahead. I would ask that I think our meeting anytime is 8:30, so if somebody can keep track of that, so that if we don't get through this, we need to expand to 8:30. Okay.
Okay, good evening, our commissioners. Let's get to the, let's see here. Okay, so we have two items that we're going to present to you tonight. These were on our agenda for the last meeting, and we did not get to them. So first, we're going to provide just a brief overview of unified development plan outline. We had previously provided a high-level outline in one of our presentations at previous meetings. We now have a much more detailed outline and are ready to move to the code reformatting, you know, once the phase-two changes move through the process. So in your packet, we provided the detailed outline, and I'll just kind of go through briefly, section by section. I will say first that we've spent a lot of time in discussion with staff, and in particular, those that use the code regularly for development review on how to sort of organize it. And we are relying on the neighborhood design section as really being a foundational element. It is a major focus of the phase-two development regulations update, and it kind of sets the framework for the rest of the code. So we went back and forth a little bit about, you know, what section to kind of include after the preface and the user guide, and we kind of landed on neighborhood design, which is sort of an overarching section that filters down to even smaller projects. So in the preface and the user guide, we're adding developments that will hopefully orient people, explain where they can find certain sections of the code. So we might have some examples, like if you're a single-family homeowner and you're looking to do X, you know, go here and look at these sections. If you're doing a larger project, like subdivision, go here. So there will be some features and links that will help people navigate through that, as well as some of the legal, legal explanations for things like drawings, for example. We have a lot of drawings or examples in there, and those are really not regulatory. They're really just for information, for examples. So you will see, like, for example, when we have new diagrams in the zoning district section, they will reference standards like setbacks and things like that. But the actual standards will be written in a table and not directly in graphics. So those are just to help users understand the code and be able to apply it effectively to their project.
Yeah, if, if you want any of us to be able to read that, you probably should make it a little bit bigger.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you.
And so the neighborhood design section will be kind of the next main section, and this is just an example. We're going to have sort of section pages for each of these chapters. They'll have a brief summary about what the chapter is, as well as a brief sort of table of contents of that. And so we'll be working on that as well. We just wanted to provide an example here for you. So neighborhood design will be the next section. We went over that in detail last time, and we'll be bringing that back to you if changes at the end of, for the next meeting. In that neighborhood design section, sorry, speaking pages on me, we have the planned unit development section, which has been drafted and is being reviewed by staff, and we'll go over that with you in a second. And then there's a number of related sections of the code that we've also brought into neighborhood design, the sectional residential density incentives, the nuts and bolts of how you do a subdivision and land division that will be brought in as well. The next section, because I think there is definitely a focus through these efforts and for city planning in general on sort of environmental and sustainability issues, that we thought that would be appropriate next chapter. And here, we're combining several sections of the existing code, including environmentally critical areas, and that will be subject to a substantial update in the next year or so. So there are certain parts of that that we're not touching deliberately. So that'll be cleaned up hopefully, and some of these will be consolidated, so it's a little bit easier to navigate. This is a very, I think, long list for, for a chapter, a section. Low-impact development will be brought in as well. State Environmental Policy Act, surface water management, which we talked about last time, and agreed not to make changes to that section as part of this effort. But perhaps partner with public work on some future updates as part of the next day. We brought in the tree standards, so this would have the limits on removing trees, as well as clearing the grading, which we spent a lot of time going through with you last time. Then we go into the zoning districts, and we are going to have some new zoning district profiles. We're moving a little bit away from the consolidated tables with footnotes, but actually having most of the information in those are zones with appropriate links to applicable sections. We'll have some maps in there as well, I think. And then we go through all this district and density standards, all your nuts and bolts of zoning, you know, your setbacks and things like that. Then it uses, so personal uses, and then use standards. So if you're doing townhouse development or attached dwellings, it makes use of specific standards that go along with that. And so that's all being brought into the use section. And as we, I think, went over previously, and if we didn't all summarize here, each section will have definitions that are really specific to that chapter, and then there'll be an overall definition section that'll be at the end of the code, which would be use terms that are used throughout the code and are not specific to one section. The next section gets into the development standards. So things like landscaping, garbage, trail corridors, you know, specific types of development have specific standards that go with them, and that will be embodied in that section, as well as signage, wireless communication facilities, which I know we've just went through some recent changes, the TBR program, protection of and preservation of landmarks, and then a definition section. And then from there, we have a number of sections that we're simply bringing in as-is and renumbering. So we're not making changes to the town center section, other than moving the UDCP process, UDCP process, sorry, to a type-three process, which I hear you examine your review. The public works section, again, there's a separate public works manual, again, that's not being impacted by this project, as well as the other public works that have been brought in with no changes. And that administration, this is an existing section, but it's going to be now in 2180, and there are some pieces that were thrown in from other parts of the code. There are some administrative provisions that were scattered a bit around the code, so we're trying to pull those together. Definitions, as I said, this will be the general definition section, so terms that are used throughout the code. And that is, that is our outline, and we'll be bringing it back next meeting, as well as all of the other code sections that you reviewed along with updates based on the input that you've given us at the previous meeting. So we'll be tracking those as well. We also have another version that we can provide for the next meeting as well, which is a reverse code outline. So essentially, it goes through the code in the existing format, and then has a reference to where it will go in the new section. Sometimes it's helpful to see it kind of both ways, so we'll provide that in the packet for the next meeting as well. Are there any questions on the outline that we presented today? Before I go on to the planned unit development presentation? Anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question. So, is development along the shoreline, is that part of here somewhere? Or do we have a separate section for that?
We have a separate section for that, and I don't believe we're bringing that in, or if we are, it's in the environment and sustainability section. I'm sorry, we're not bringing it in.
I, I think we chose, we chose not to bring it in. Title 25 is where it currently is located, and we, 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 I'm not sure where we stand on it, but I would advise against bringing it in, because if we do bring it in and renumber it, then we have to go back to the Department of Ecology and go through their approval process, because ultimately, although it is our SMP, it is not our SMP. It is the State Department of Ecology's rule set that the city is required to implement. Any changes to that rule set require Department of Ecology approval and change, and they are required to register it then, and they keep the master copy of the rule set. So I would suggest leaving Title 25 as it stands, because that is a very complicated process to get Ecology approval.
Thank you. Another question? So one other kind of tangential question is, is there, so rewriting the code to make it more usable has a lot of intangible benefits, of course, and that's really subjective. Is there any way to actually measure, you know, objectively, I mean, is it to justify what we've done? In other words, say, well, you know, we used to have 800 sections, and now we have 600 sections, or we have this much, this many pages. I just, to keep it, there's probably somebody who will ask that question, and even in my mind, I think, well, if we covered the same content and reduced the amount of words by half, we'd probably accomplish quite a bit, because that sort of proves that it's more usable, whereas, you know, if we spend money and time and can't really prove that we've done it, I'm just curious if there's any way to justify it.
Yeah, well, I can, I could just first speak from my experience and a little bit about the particulars of the project. So, you know, the UDC effort is really around creating a structure that can stand the test of time. And I think, you know, this is a multi-phase project. We're addressing code updates for specific sections, but we're not addressing a number of the sections in terms of substance change or even minor changes. So from my perspective, I think, once we get the format in place, we'll then be able to continue to update sections and improve the clarity and the usability of the code. So for example, when the critical area section gets updated, that would be another opportunity to sort of pare sections down, make it more user-friendly and follow the format. So I think we will start to, you know, capitalize on some of these changes over time. And then I would just say, from my experience as a planning director doing a lot of development review, one community I worked for in Washington, we did not have a UDC. We had a code very similar to what Sanamis does in terms of how it's organized, and it was just really challenging, very hard to administer, hard to find things. You felt like sometimes you found sections you didn't even know were there. You felt like sometimes you found sections you didn't even know were there. It was really challenging. In another city I worked for, they were an early adopter of creating a unified development code. It was one booklet. It was easy to understand. I could always find things. So, from an experience perspective, I think there's definitely benefits to it. But to your point, we're not gonna address every piece of that in this, in this second phase. Okay, thank you. Yeah, good question. Okay. And if there's any other questions, we can refer back to this. It's no problem. The sentence comes up later. And you have the reverse outline. I won't go through it, but I'll just kind of show you how it works. So, we just go sequentially in the order of the titles that we're pulling in, and you see each section, and then it tells you where it's going in the code. So, if you have to, we can kind of go back and forth and be able to find what things exist today and where they'll be going in future. So, that pulling apart of certain sections and co-mangling them, that, that in and of itself will have some benefit. But I think as, as some of these substantive sections get revised, you know, the code will just continue to get better over time. So, the next section that we're gonna talk about, this is the only section of code, I believe, that we have not seen yet. And so, we're providing an outline, but it is much of the content in the presentation tonight. We have made one additional proposal in the draft code that you'll see in the packet when we get it next week. And that's related to a staff discussion we had around providing an incentive for affordable housing. So, we have a proposal for that, and we'll walk through that with you. So, when we started this project, you know, it was set up so that we would make changes to what we're referring to as the base program for fair subdivision, or designing a new neighborhood. And that's the code that you've seen in the neighborhood design section. And that does have some additional process and some additional requirements. It doesn't reduce density per se, but it does have some additional design requirements. And there are some limits on things like floor-to-area ratio and other standards that, you know, will impact how development occurs in a positive way, if you attention. But the other piece of that was to create a plan, a unit development code, which I'll walk through, which would provide some more flexibility, as well as incentives for creativity in design and to achieve some of the goals in the city comprehensive plan. So, things like more diversity in housing, affordable housing, really quality open space, you know, appropriate transitions to adjacent development, connected streets, you know, all the stuff that we kind of went through early on in the process, kind of looking at city vision. So, the planned development code is something that developers or applicants would choose to opt into. It's not a requirement. Some cities do develop plans, unit development codes, and they are required in certain instances of certain types of projects. We're expecting now it's not required. On the depth of accessibility design, particularly on the interior of the development, and that's something we'd like to hear from the commission tonight about. When we were walking through some of the development examples, when we talked about the project and memorals and some of the qualities there, and that was approved under, I believe, a King County PUD code as, as the city was paying for it. And, you know, that, I think, exhibits some of the trade-offs, right? It's got a lot of open space. It's got nice, you know, forested buffers. It's got pretty well-designed streets. But the houses are closer together, and setbacks are closer. And that's kind of the trade-off in that program. So, we'd like to hear from you about, about that tonight, and I'll go through some details. There's kind of three ways to set up a planned development code. You can basically de-dome the property and look at the PUD process as basically creating site-specific zoning. You have to pass it with ordinance. That's a little bit more of a rigorous process. You can also do it through an overlay zone, so it's sort of like a floating overlay zone. And then, that applies for any planned unit development project. Or you can simply allow it as a permitted use in the districts that you intend to allow it. And that's the app that we're currently proposing. It's a simple fit format. And I think we'll still achieve our objectives. We are proposing that it be a type-three review process. So, that would be a direct recommendation to the hearing examiner and all the public nervous thing. Process that goes along with that. Another piece is that PUDs will typically allow regulatory modifications. So, we want to be really specific around regulations that we want to allow modification for and those that we don't. And another thing to think about is that you can actually put caps on those limits. So, you might be able to say, for example, on the interior of a project, we're okay with modifying the setbacks. Again, if the criteria are met, it's not just a free-for-all. So, we would, we would allow that modification. But we're not really comfortable with, say, a hundred percent modification. Maybe we want to limit that modification to no more than fifty percent or something like that. We can also opt out certain development standards in the current draft. We've written it such that the building height standard can't be modified, you know? So, that's another thing to discuss. But from our perspective, there doesn't really be a really good reason to modify the building heights. I think they're already fairly primitive in the R zones, as they are today, but something to think about. So, we've written some modifications for dimensional standards, things like setbacks and such, street standards. So, if you want to do a unique kind of street design that is a little bit atypical, there's a way to do that. Parking requirements could also be modified, again, if the criteria are met and there's an adverse impact. There's a lot of criteria that we've written in that could not be modified under the current proposal. That would be critical areas. That would be stormwater areas. Generally, the neighborhood design standards, so like things like connectivity or, you know, integrating natural features, you know, those are two things that we don't want to waive. And in fact, we should theoretically getting, getting even more of that through this process. Building codes, clearing grading, and probably with only a few potential exceptions. And some of these are only for discussion purposes tonight. We're not really proposing to modify the land uses, right? So, in an R zone, if you can do single-family townhouses and INUs and duplexes, that's kind of the range that you're left with. You can't necessarily go in and do, you know, large-scale apartment buildings. We did also put this in the presentation that sometimes PUDs will allow some small-scale commercial use or neighborhood serving uses. We wrote here neighborhood serving retail with cafes. Another thing we had talked about, someone had suggested maybe a small daycare. You know, these would be really small and low-impact and permanently deserve the neighborhood. But it's really a choice. And, you know, if there's not support community with that, then we can certainly take it out. But something we wanted to bring forward as a potential option.
So, Jeff, can you pause that for just a moment?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to move to extend the meeting by another thirty minutes to end at nine o'clock.
Second.
Sorry, my mute part does spirit. It's been one second to extend to nine o'clock. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate that. And so, just for reference, you know, again, another decision point, and we've got input from the commission. Right now, it's been written that you can do a PUD in the R1 through R8 zones, so sort of a more single-family zones. This could be changed to go up to R12 and R18. I think part of our thinking was that there's really just such small amounts of land in the R12 and the R18, and there already are more allowances for density. And I think if those densities, you know, there's, there's, I think, more incentive to build smaller units or more diversity as compared to the R1 and R8 zones. But with that said, we could certainly add in the R12 and the R18. Just for reference, we just wanted to show you the district maps, again, to get a sense of the scale of land. That could be included. So, R1 is sort of one of the, quite a bit of land grown for that. A lot of it developed, but, you know, you can see some large parcels there as well. Could be encumbered. This doesn't show them critical areas on it. But R8, which is our largest district in the city, encompasses a lot of the northern part of the middle belt here. And then, as they get smaller and smaller, you have R6, and a lot of that is a colony area down, which is mostly developed. I think maybe a lot of these parcels are open space tracks, maybe not all of them. But again, not a very PUD-like-looking site plan there. And then, you can see here, even when you get to the R8, it's just very limited in terms of the land. And R12 and R18 are pretty similar. So, another thing that planned developments typically do is they up the anti-density on the process, right? Because this is discretionary review. It's, you know, something that people opt into. They're trying to make the case that their development is of better quality and provides more public benefits than the standard subdivision. So, in our perspective, that warrants some tweaks to the process in a couple of different ways. So, one is having a formal concept review, right? Again, to get initial feedback before you go and spend a lot of money on engineering. And since it's a PUD, there's a lot more, I think, different directions that could be taken in the design of the project. So, we propose the formal concept review that would be at the staff level, that would be reviewed by staff, and that sort of review or materials would eventually go to the hearing examiner with the formal application. And so, some of the elements of what that concept review would look like is you'd have to have a context map, you know, showing existing conditions, natural features, trees, vegetation, geography, and all those things that you want to be thinking about as you start to design your development. Next, you have, you know, high-level illustrated colored site plans. So, generally, that's a street parcel, open spaces, critical areas, you know, all of those features of your development. And I think something that is less detailed than a standard engineer drawing set. And here, that would explain how the proposal satisfies the PUD review criteria, which is really important. It starts to get at the kind of design thinking. And our hope is that as people go through the PUD process, you know, they're involving, you know, a great design team that's interdisciplinary and is sort of looking at the project from all facets. They'd have to show some of their proposed uses and residential unit sets, make sure that were within the limits of, of the, any density limitations or floor area limits. Some high-level concept building elevations or 3D models if they want to, and if there was just, again, smaller capital kind of style board, give insights, kind of look and feel the project. And then, a really important assembly of all their requested modifications. If they're asking for internal relief on setbacks or whatever the case may be, they need to spell that out and explain, you know, why that is a benefit to the project and the city approving that in conjunction with the review criteria. And then, the review criteria, as we've developed here, might have been slightly updated. No, I think that's updated in, in the public works since our last meeting. So, the first one, planned development is superior design compared to the regulations for the underlying zone. It furthers the goal of the city's comprehensive plan. Planned development provides clear public benefits that exceed the standard development. And then, we have some examples, right? They can make the case for some other ones, but, you know, extensive preservation and/or restoration of natural features and ecological function. And again, this could depend on the project. If it was a forest site, it could be about preservation. If it happens to be a site that's cleared and maybe hasn't, you know, some sort of contamination or other issues, maybe unlikely in the R zone. But, you know, that sort of restoration aspect could be really powerful. The sort of fundamental design of the streets, parcels, buildings, and layouts, you know, would be another potential benefit, furthering the planned goals for connectivity and promoting opportunities for non-motorized travel and appropriate transitions through adjacent properties. The next one will be with open space. Again, we do have some allowances for providing additional open space in the base program. But that's accentuating in the PUD program and opportunities to, again, provide even maybe public park space or two-point trail connections, natural areas, you know, things that I think go perhaps beyond just the standard, you know, open space track, you know, that's managed by a homeowners association or something like that. Providing a range of housing types, I think, really important. Again, under the existing code, there's allowances for this, but many developers not taking advantage of it. And I think part of that may be that there's no real advantage of building smaller units. You can't build more smaller units. We can, you know, that's why I think the current code, to some extent, is larger, the larger homes that are being built fairly consistently. Again, there's range of types, single-family, eighty years, duplexes, and townhouses. And if they're desire, we could modify that for the PUD. But we're proposing to keep it standard and correct. So, density is a real important one. And again, a lot of PUD programs will provide detailed incentives. Either they'll have certain, like, appoint system or some sort of criteria for you to allow density. But I think in this case, given how the base program works, we may not actually have to do that. I think we're here with a much simplified approach. And so, what we're proposing is that rather than getting a density limit, you get a square footage allocation that is essentially the same as the base program. So, you're not permitted to build more square footage. You're permitted to build the same. However, if you use the PUD criteria, you could divide that floor area up into however you would like to. Again, meeting the criteria. So, for example, you could build, you know, a four thousand square foot house, or you could build, you know, three units that equal four thousand square feet. So, it basically has a built-in incentive for more housing diversity. We also are proposing a cap on detached single-family of eighty-five percent of the units. However, that fifteen percent that needs to be other than single-family could be satisfied by ADU units if they wanted to go that approach. The principal dwelling would not count towards that fifteen percent, but the ADU would. Whereas, if you build duplexes or townhouses, all of those units would count towards your fifteen percent requirement. And then, affordable housing. The staff had asked us to look into crafting incentives around affordable housing. And again, trying to keep things fairly easy to understand, but have a really big impact. What we're proposing is that you can get a twenty percent increase in floor-to-area ratio from your base if you provide, you can do that to affordable units. And it's a one-to-one bonus. So, if you build two thousand square feet of affordable units, you get two thousand square feet that you can build at market rate units. And we found that kind of a one-to-one bonus is sort of a minimum. And again, you know, we don't have the benefit of detailed economic analysis. But we feel like this could have the intended effect of creating not only more market rate units and more diverse housing types, but also actually build some perpetually affordable housing that could be leased and/or for sale. And then, I brought back this diagram mainly for discussion purposes. So, this is the Laurel's diagram that we did, and we've actually modified it a bit. There are some of the neighborhood design criteria that we felt like this was not really reflecting. And so, we've modified it and tried to make it a little more generic, although it's still recognized in a lot of the Laurel. And we could modify this further. We wanted to have discussion with the commission and input before we went ahead and do that. But a couple of things we did, we built up the block lengths a little bit and put a trail through the middle, since the trail is one of the ways that you can meet your connectivity requirements and your block requirements in the neighborhood design section. And then, we added a couple of connections to adjacent streets that, you know, aren't there today. So, that's the extent of it. So, again, it's just for the discussion piece. And you can see that all of this extra open space that's been provided. You know, the trade-off, again, is the reduced setbacks in the interior of the site. But again, it's buffered. So, you know, we have lots of flexibility in terms of how we craft the code and what we want to allow applicants to request modifications for or not. So, we can, you know, certainly update this after we have more discussion about it. So, that's it for the third meeting. I'll stop there and open it up for questions and comments.
Okay, who has questions? Maybe I'll, I'll start off with one. And I apologize if I'm just not tracking this. Maybe there's something obvious about this. But what is the incentive for a builder to do planning and development like this versus just using net density to build a bunch of, you know, typical four-bedroom houses that they'd still be allowed to build, and they can use net density to build them whole together? In other words, I mean, what we're looking at right here, if they built the Laurel's but didn't do any of the amenities that we're talking about as part of a planned development, then why would they do that? Why would they?
Why would they, you know, but you mentioned some incentives with affordable housing and that sort of thing, but it seems like there must be more to it than that to actually incentivize something other than just a net density development?
Yep, yep, no, really good question, gets to the core of it. So a couple of things, I'll start off. So first, we made some changes to the base program, right? So if you want to build that four thousand square foot house, you're not going to have to have it on at least an eight thousand square foot lot. So that's a fairly thing that can change, again, you could still go and build that, and you can still potentially reduce your lot size a little bit below the, you know, the district standard, so to speak, if you were just doing the straight math of, you know, the district number of units per acre, you know, divided by an acre. So that is one thing that's changing. I think the big incentive is that instead of just being able to build a certain number of units, you can build more units, it could be smaller units. So I think that would be the potential benefit of going through the P U D. So again, you know, would it be a benefit to say, build, you know, some single-family, larger single-family homes, but then have the option instead of building a four thousand square foot home to build for townhouses? You know, that's, so that's the incentive, is that the square, the density is not capped by the square footage like it is in the base program. And then the affordable housing is essentially allows you to build a market, another market rate unit for each affordable unit that you build. So, you know, again, we don't want to track, you know, how that's being used and whether it's achieving its intended purpose. We're also planning to meet with the master builders up here coming soon, and, you know, looking to get input from developers and those involved in the community, as well as, you know, residents and such at the public hearing. So I think that's the big game changer, is that you're not capped by the dense number of units and that you can apply that square footage to more units that are smaller.
And just a clarification, which I think you said a couple of times, but I want to make sure, there's still a limit on what types of units can be built, so they can still only build single-family townhouses, you have the list up on the screen, but it's not like neighbors should be concerned that someone could come in and build something very unexpected, it's still neighborhood residential type development?
Yes, exactly, yep, it'll be the same thing, and I think, you know, townhouses is a good example, right? Townhouses, I believe, are allowed even in like the R four zone, but a four units an acre, no one's going to build a townhouse, right? A townhouse is typically, you know, sixteen, twenty, you know, somewhere in that range, depending on the size. So that's the issue with the housing diversity, is when you're faced with building a smaller townhouse versus a four thousand square foot home, it's really not comparable from an economic perspective, because, you know, if you're selling by the square foot, you want more square footage, right?
Yeah, I think it's just important for people to, in order to support this concept, to make sure that they understand the limits on what could be built, so that they don't feel like, even if it's behind our landscape buffer, it's still a residential neighborhood type development that fits in with the community.
If you have suggestions for incentives or for ways for us to mesh up the flexibility with the requirement, we're definitely open to some suggestions. You know, I think that the management of the F A R across the entire site and trying to promote diversity in the types of units being built, you know, so we, you know, we would love to see it part of a P U D, an applicant that builds, so say their base density was ten units, and then instead of using the density that you did it by square footage, and say they built four market rate typical single-family homes, say they built four medium-sized homes, say they built four accessory dwelling unit sized homes, and say they built four units in duplexes. That is something that you could see happening, and they get that many more units out of it, then if they added some affordability to the duplexes, well, then maybe they could build six instead of four. And maybe if they added affordability to the medium-sized homes, then maybe they could build six instead of four. You know, this is just an example of what we're trying to do in a P U D, and the idea here is that the P U D would be designed in a way that would be a predictable outcome to the community, it would include things like perimeter landscaping requirements, or frontage landscaping requirements, connectivity with trails and things like that, other roads that might go through it. And the idea is that it's much more of a, you know, I consider our subdivision process to be pretty transparent already, but it would be even more transparent, you know, we would be trying to incorporate things, like, and we talked quite a bit about the use of an open house after the applicant has made formal application for P U D, and how do we hold an open house for that, right? And these things, it would be really valuable. So our hope is, is that in line with the city's housing strategy, and in line with our needs to provide for diversity in housing and affordable housing, that this is a tool that we can start to see some progress in those categories.
I would only just say my hesitation here is mostly, and I will be interested to hear what the builders might say, is we've dabbled in this a little bit along the way, and, you know, so far, nobody's bet on it very much, so it'll be interesting to see if anybody indicates that they might consider some of these things.
Are there, let me figure out how to articulate this, are there upper limit thresholds to how a builder can carve up the land with regards to adding the affordable units in order to just maximize the total number of units built? I see this being, I don't want to call it a shell game, but if I can move the number of affordable units around, I can get an equal number of medium to medium-large houses out of it and get a maximized return on what it is that I'm trying to do.
Yeah, good question. I mean, we did propose in the current draft a twenty percent cap on the affordable bonus, right? So that's really the only increase. The other, you know, the density in the main part of the P U D program is theoretically you could increase the number of units, but again, it's the same square footage that would be in the base program. So the other thing is that the affordable bonus is tied to square footage and not units. So this would be, again, something that we want to input from the development community, but that would, I think, prevent like providing a small studio unit and then building a four thousand square foot home in exchange for it, that if there's more proportionality in terms of the size of the affordable unit and the square footage allocation that you get for your additional market rate units.
If I could also add, Jeff, that, you know, we're, with the P U D, we're moving away from traditional Euclidean type zoning, which is more based in setbacks and dimensional standards, and we're moving more into form-based zoning, which, where, is really where, you know, you could fit more into a site if it's designed by a landscape architect and an architect in a way that makes it mimic a comparable residential development, you know, adjacent, you know, community character, that you can actually fit more in there because it's being designed more cohesively, if that makes sense. So what we're looking at here is, is, you know, giving flexibility to what are otherwise rigid design requirements, like setbacks and dimensional standards, in an effort to loosen up how something is designed to fit more in there, but at the same time, the ultimate perception of the passerby, external to the project, wouldn't really notice that there's more density in there. That's the objective here, is to allow for some additional densities and diversity in housing types, but have it be designed in a way that the average passerby wouldn't really even notice that there's more in there.
So as I said, we'll be bringing the full code draft to you next Friday for our meeting July first. So we'll be able to review that, and we'll have time to discuss this again at the next meeting, but we wanted to preview it with you beforehand so that you kind of understand the major elements and have some time to give it some thought. Before additional input, we'll be able to debrief for our meeting with the master builders as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, next is public comment, agenda-related public comment. Let's see, Jackie, do we have anybody? Nope, let's do our agenda-related public comment.
Perfect, thank you. We have one caller on the line, but I'll go ahead and read our statement to give others a chance to call in. Pursuant to the governor's emergency proclamation twenty dash twenty-five, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual planning commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. Up to seven minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is one eight seven two two four zero three three one one, and the access code is six nine nine eight three nine two two nine. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment, and you'll hear an automated voice say unmuted. The operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. I will go ahead and unmute our first caller, go ahead and begin whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, I live at four zero eight two hundred eighth Avenue, our distance vanished for the last twenty years. Just great presentations, and thank you for all the discussions and taking our feedback earlier, and especially those from staff, including Director David Pyle and Stephanie Sullivan, one of the eyes, both with Aaron, Eric, excuse me, with that help throughout doing the presentation. For Jeff Arango, the framework consultant, a couple of things on your outline for the development regs phase two and the U B O. Title twenty-four is the interim comprehensive plan, the only thing that's left in there is twenty-four dot twenty, which is the basin plan, which are adopted for drainage. Those weren't rolled into four because they were part of another project, but they really should be rolled into at least title thirteen or whatever you're doing for stormwater, if possible. And then there's twenty-four A, which is the comprehensive plan and development regulation amendment process and procedures, which was updated very well by Miriam Leitner, still with community development. And I don't know if that's being incorporated or not, but that's the way that the public can make changes, so maybe that could be incorporated too, it's fairly new, and I think would be good to put as part of the U D O, because it is a way that people can give input for what they'd like to see changed. And then I saw that there were things that maybe weren't getting updated. I really loved the P U D descriptions, it sounds like a great thing, and it is super important to hear what the builders say, because if the incentives are things they would want to do, it would make it really fly, and if it's not, then maybe it needs to get changed based on that. And then also, when you're listing things, you list eighty U duplexes, townhouses, but you're not using the word condos or condominiums. I believe that they weren't getting built for a while because there was some state legislation regarding what builders are being liable and responsible for, I believe that's changed, so condos are more attractive, so hopefully that can be added to the list of things that might be used as a variety of housing options. And I don't really have a lot of other stuff to say, because I think it all looks really good, I think the work that's getting done is great, and I just thank you for what you've done on that. And then just to reflect one thing back on the stormwater people, drainage review with the new adoptions, which were January first of two thousand seventeen, became effective and adopted in December two thousand sixteen. There's simplified drainage review, which doesn't usually require a civil engineer, and then there's a targeted drainage review, which is actually a simplified drainage review and a targeted drainage review, because you do need to have some engineering for parts. The new thing that got added with the adoption is a directed drainage review, and then there's full and large, so there's all those types, and they're just worth looking over and reviewing, they're not that hard to learn, but you do have to look them over, because there's a bunch of different ones, and they were changes from prior stuff. So I thought staff did a really good job, the discussions were great, and I thank you again for the consideration and my inputs today, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Looks like that was our only caller for agenda public comments, so I'll hand it back to you, Chair Baughman.
Thanks, Mary, thanks, Jackie. Before we go this evening, I want to mention the calendar, upcoming calendar, we have two meetings on the calendar for July. As a reminder, we need four commissioners to really, essentially to conduct business, and right now, we're not, we're kind of on the razor's edge for the July first meeting for four people being available. So please keep Jackie, and you can copy me as well, but particularly keep Jackie in the loop about being able to attend or not attend the July first meeting, because it's unproductive to schedule everything, and then it ends up that there's only three of us, that's very unproductive. So other than that, I'm hopeful that very soon we will be able to see each other face to face, I'm very much looking forward to that, and I thank everyone this evening. Is there anything else, David or Evan, anything?
Yeah, just one comment on what you said, Chair Baughman, and that is, if we are going to not have a quorum on July first, that would be good to know, because what we will then do is ask the commission if we could start the meeting on the fifteenth at five thirty, because we do have quite a bit of material to cover regarding the phase two development regs, and we really did need that meeting to make it to the public hearing before the recess. So if we're not able to hold that meeting, I understand people have vacation plans and things going on and into school, and if we're not able to hold that meeting, we would try to get an hour back at least so that we could have enough time to review materials prior to holding the public hearing that same evening. The development reg space two is scheduled to go to the city council in September after their August recess, and because we are in an election year, it is really essential and important for us to reach adoption by the end of December, because if there are council members that are new and added on January first, twenty twenty-two, then we will likely have to spend quite a bit more time unwinding the topics that we've covered and possibly even bringing it back to the planning commission at that point. So for continuity's sake, we do need to reach the goal by the end of the year, in order to do so, we do need to stay on schedule.
Just to clarify, the July fifteenth meeting is actually already on the calendar, the start of five thirty, so there you go. Okay?
Just a quick, so it's a relatively important amount of material to cover at the next meeting, right? And so we will lose some of the diversity of opinion and some of the wisdom of those commissioners still not be able to attend, so I don't know if it might make sense, even if we can have a quorum of just the four to delay. And maybe that can be done offline and decided, but we decide what's best.
I was going to suggest over the course of the next week or so, maybe we just, Evan, if you can think through that, and let's decide what makes the most sense for everybody. Okay. If nothing else, someone would like to adjourn? I moved in second, we adjourn this evening, all those in favor say aye. Everyone have a nice evening and enjoy the warm weather.
Thank you.